A minute warning.
Mr. Moderator, there are a lot of people having difficulty finding parking spots.
I know.
Just so you know. Did you need water? There you go. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations to all, and thank you for your service.
And I would like to have everybody rise for a moment of silence in the memory of Linda Lowell, precinct seven rep who passed away recently. Thank you. I will dispense with the introduction of officials. We all know who they are with the exception of Lauren Goldberg, who is sitting in for John Giorgio as town council. And I have a request here from Bruce Clark that we have a non-resident speaker, Paul Howard, engineer with TATA and Howard Engineering, to speak on Article 17. I need a vote on this. All those in favor, please raise your tickets or your clicker.
I have clickers.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. Moderator, did you vote for him already?
Now I want you to use the clicker and press either one, two, or three, preferably just one, so we can get a quorum count. We have 120, and quorum is 82. If your clicker does not work, make sure you press the one, two, or three, not the slash bars on top. Please bring it over to the IT table.
Mr. Moderator, you may want to announce in the event, if you need to do a hand count to either raise your hand, otherwise it will be spread.
When I ask for a hand count, you don't have your little fancy colored pieces of paper. Take the clicker with the bright side and face it towards me because sometimes it's hard to see black, purple, dark blue. But if you raise your hand high enough, I'll be able to see it. I'm not going over the rules. They're the same. We have a question and answer period that you're allowed two questions, after which you queue up at the end of the line. I ask all presenters to be brief, direct, to the point. We have a pro and a con microphone. If you're for an article, you get behind the green microphone; if you're against it, behind the red microphone. And you may ask the presenter directly without going through the moderator. Now, I know we're going to have some residents, especially for Article 17 and 18, that might want to speak. I just very quickly want to go over what the residents can do and cannot do. Residents cannot sit in the main area. Residents cannot participate in a question and answer period. Residents can fully participate in a debate after they state their name and address. They must follow the same rules of the quorum that the reps do, specified in the back of the finance committee book. Residents cannot make motions. Residents cannot propose amendments. Residents cannot rise to a point of order, a point of information, or a point of privilege. And lastly, residents cannot vote. When a resident is, a citizen's petition is presenting their article, I ask that they be afforded the same rights, privileges, and courtesies that you would afford any town official. And if you have an amendment you want to make, there are amendment forms in the back of the hall. If, in the course of debate, you come up with an amendment, I will accept it on any legible form that town council can review. Having said that, we go right to Article 1. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As is customary at town meeting, we begin with reports from previous meetings. I'm pleased to report to the town meeting that all the actions at the previous town meeting have been approved by the relevant state officials, most notably the bylaws and zoning bylaws that were adopted by town meeting. The town clerk did receive notification from the attorney general's office that all actions have been approved. For tonight's consideration, we have basically just three speakers to give reports on. Pat Maloney will give an update regarding the permanent building committee in terms of the major capital projects in the community. Gary Persicetti, our DPW director, will be giving an update on the $18.1 million energy management performance contract. And John Souzer, our finance director, in accordance with the town bylaws, will be providing a five-year financial forecast. So at this point, I'll turn the presentation over to Pat Maloney, the chairman of the permanent building committee.
Thank you, Paul. Good evening, everybody. I'm here this evening just to talk about the projects that we have going on in town and give you a quick report. But before I do that, I will let you know who the members are of the permanent building committee. Those members include myself, my co-chairman, David Dwayne, Kathleen Howe, Eric Johnson, Daniel Moss, Steve Roberts, and Gary Persicetti. So we'll start with DPW project. For everything that's been funded on this project, we have completed the work that we have been funded for. So I'll give you, for anybody that hasn't been by the site yet, excuse me, give you an idea of what the building looks like now. And Gary put the big plow out front so you could make no mistake that, you know, what building you were pulling into when you pulled in over there. Salt shed is completed and constructed. Salt inside the shed, ready to be utilized this winter, ready to go. And then you can see them loading the salt in. Trucks inside and undercover that we had hoped for for a long time, so working towards completing the overall project. Again, I'll remind everybody that we've expensed about $8.5 million out of what was projected to be a $13 million project. So we still have a little ways to go, but all the groups are in. And you can see that we have highway, sewer, engineering, facilities, and parks within the building at this point. But one thing I'd like to say before I move on is that we still do have a $5 million project to complete. And while we have all of the entities in the building and working under one roof, we're still suffering some inefficiencies inasmuch as our vehicular maintenance group is still up at Richardson Road. We need some funding to get the lifts and the bays fitted out so that we can do that work there. We also have a fueling island that we need to put in. We have a truck wash bay that we need to put in, as well as some other construction to finish up and give them the complete project that we bargained for way back when. So as we move forward over the next year or two, I think it's important to keep in mind that we still have roughly a $5 million project to complete this overall project. So I'm sure we'll be back again to speak about that. Central fire headquarters. We're in a position where we've just completed last week Phase One, which was the excavation and site work wherein we constructed the rear parking lot and lighting, all the drainage for the rear parking lot and upper parking lot. We recreated a new parking lot on the upper level. And just a couple of shots of the renderings, and now you can kind of see how it all starts to come together. You can see that they're up there, and they're about to start excavating for the actual building at this point. This is a shot from the far side of the apron, so you can see the other parking lot almost completed and start to get a feel for the site and how it'll work. There's another picture of the new upper parking and the apron. And now that you can see that brought down to street level, you can see that this site should prove to be a real benefit, and it's coming out much like we hoped it would. And new sidewalks outside the apron area. And you can see now on the left-hand side of the picture that that's actually where they're starting construction. This is the new general contractor that we just hired to build the building. So again, we had a Phase One site work planned to get logistics worked out so that we had some place for people to park down back and also create some new parking up front. And we are now underway starting the construction of the new building. I will be back on Article Nine to talk to you about some additional funding for the project, but so far, things have gone very well with the exception of some bidding issues that we had. So that's the fire department. And the final project that we're working on right now is the Chelmsford Country Club. We're expecting general contractor bids in this Wednesday, so we'll be looking forward to successful bids on that and coming back and looking to enter into a contract and get permission from the appropriate board. So we're well underway with that. We are out to bid, and we're awaiting general contractor bids later this week. Just a picture of the front of the building and the back of the building as it was over the summer. The new addition will go right where the old addition was, which is the concrete patio that you see there. So we'll be putting the same exact size addition back on the building and hoping to get it open for next spring. And with that, I'll turn it over to Gary Persicetti.
Good evening, Gary Persicetti, DPW director. I'm just going to take you through the $18.1 million that this body gave us to do the energy management performance contract, which we are doing with Johnson Controls. Just to give you a little familiarity, we're at nine, there's 951,560 square feet. We're doing between 24 buildings on this project. The total energy cost for the town is 1.6 million. And then this chart just tells you that we average $1.11 per therm. And then I'm going to take you through each ECM real quickly. The ECM is the energy conservation measure. The first one is lighting. We're doing lighting throughout 24 buildings. At this point, we've expensed 28 percent, which is $269,000 for upgrades to it. There's a sample of the high school hallway lit better than it was and for less energy than it was. The second one is lighting controls, which are basically occupancy sensors. We've expensed 79 percent of this, or $189,000. The picture on the left shows you one up on a ceiling and then just shows you what it shuts off at night when it's not running. The third ECM is on weatherization. We are at 59 percent, which is 212,000. This is door sweeps, window caulking, all around to make sure that the facilities are tight, and we're gaining the energy savings that we need. The next one is roof insulation. It was done in seven sites. We've expensed 91 percent of it for $347,000 to date. Here's a picture of the center school with bad insulation and blown-in insulation at South Row. The next one is window replacement. There's two buildings. It's the central administration and a fire station. Those have not started yet, so there is nothing that's been expensed to date. The next one is the energy management system, which is one of the largest ones. This is the DDC controls. To date, we spent about 30 percent, which is $823,000. And this picture shows you the controls in the left, which is the univent cabinet, and the right is a master control panel. The next one is VFDs. Now, we did a lot of this during a grant from DOE some years back, so there's five that weren't done, that has not started yet. The DX cooling, which is in this building. This building got new heating and air conditioning, and we've expensed $90,950. But actually, these slides are about a week and a half old. We've actually finished this job at 100 percent. There's a picture of one of the units sitting outside. The next one is the air handler replacement. This is at town offices in the gym. That has not started at all yet. And then we go to the heating system. This is the boiler replacement at town offices. Again, this slide at the time was at 20 percent for $45,000. It is complete for the 228 at this date. There's a picture of the two boilers. The next one is pipe and valve installation. To date, we've expensed $930 or 20 percent. In some of the boiler rooms, there were some pipes that really should have been insulated to help keep the heat going up and not letting it just be in the building. Univentilators, we've done 48 percent complete. We are completed at Chelmsford High, I'm sorry, Harrington, and we're almost done at Byham. We've expensed $1,193,000. So we're out with the old, in with the new. The next one is we had at the high school. Because of labs, they needed to have 10 of the rooms air-conditioned. We're 85 percent complete with that, spending $160,879. That's showing you the run from downstairs. A unit outside showing you the piping to it. Next one is the cooling system at town office, ductlets splits. We've only expensed 3 percent at this time, which is $18,850, which has been for the more engineering. If you were to walk in a building, you'll see blue tape on the ceiling. That's just the outline of where they're going to penetrate through and go to each individual room. The next one is the chiller replacement at the center school. That job has actually just started today, so we have not expensed any money. That is the chiller that will be replaced. The next one is VFDs on hot water pumps, which is also in the center school, and that will be done right around the same time, so that has not been started as well. The biggest project, of course, is the solar. And as of this slide, which was about a week and a half old, we had zero to date. We've already spent 1.2 million or 19 percent. We have the panels in for the high school, and we have panels in for the Harrington to date, and panels which should show up next week for the center school. And this is basically telling you that we've scaffolded 575 kilowatts of solar panels have been delivered to date, and a balance of it is that we're receiving another 760. That's a picture of the existing solar right now on both the high school and the Parker School. Some pictures just showing you them doing the lifts of the panels up on the roof. This is the trays and the balis that hold it down because none of this is directly fastened to the roof. We have energy-efficient motor replacements at the Harrington School and community ed. This has not been started to date. And then ECM 24, which is water conservation. That was at the high school and the Harrington at fully expense at 144. What it did is it took toilets at 3.5 GPMs, GPF brought it down to 1.28. Urinals from 2 down to 1, and existing sinks from 2.2 down to .5, saving a lot of money. That's a picture of a new urinal and the retrofit to the faucet. The next one is the vending machine controls. That's not starting till 11414, and that's just going to make it so they shut off and give us more control of them. Steam and hot water conversion, which is 33 percent of the Parker School, which is still steam. That is going to happen in March of 214. And then we have transformers that are taking place at two schools and the ICE Forum, and that will be completed in February of 214. Street light retrofit. As you might have heard, we are redoing all the street lights in town. We were saying to date, we spent $12,309, and since then, the crew has been in town for a whole week. So we've gotten about 40 already hung, and we're working on it as we continue. There's a picture of one of them there. And lastly, that would, just to let you know, at the project of 18.1 million to date, we've expensed $4,709, which is 59 percent in four months. Thank you.
Good evening. Tonight, I'd like to provide you with some highlights of our annual five-year financial forecast. When you went to the room this evening, there were copies of the detailed forecast available on the information table, so in the interest of time, we're just going to hit some of the highlights in this presentation. First, we'll take a look at revenues, expenditures, and then look at the overall summary. Under revenue, for fiscal year 15, our largest source continues to be property taxes. So under state law, we start with our levy base of $78.7 million, and that's a historical figure based on the prior year's levy limit. And then we add a 2.5 percent increase allowed, which is about $1.96 million, and then estimated new growth of about $1 million. And then finally, we add $5.1 million for excluded debt service for the sewer, school, and public works projects. And this gives us a total of about $86.7 million that can be raised through property taxes. The, I should mention, our excluded debt service declines about $489,000 next fiscal year, and it continues a downward trend each year after that, and we'll take a look at that in more detail. Next, state aid is our second-largest revenue source, and within that, Chapter 78 is our largest single account, and we're estimating that that will increase about $200,000 a year going forward in the forecast. The second-largest account in state aid is unrestricted general government aid, and we're estimating that will increase about $100,000 per year. And as we know from past years looking at this, the state aid, the level of state aid that we receive is highly dependent on state collections of personal income and capital gains taxes, so state aid is always a variable. And then moving on to available funds. This is, in this revenue category, it's really a collection of various reimbursements from a number of revolving funds and special-purpose funds. And in fiscal year 15, I just want to explain, we have a new category this year, the first item. And as you all recall, the athletic field project in town was funded through a combination of private fundraising, community preservation funds, and revolving fund revenue. And so this amount is the fiscal year 15 amount that will be used to pay the non-CPF for the revolving fund portion of the debt service. Second, childcare. The school childcare department will continue to reimburse for employee benefits costs for those employees, and that will, we're estimating that will increase about 7 percent just to keep pace with healthcare expenditures. And then finally, sewer betterment and capital improvement funds. We'll take a look at this more in detail on a future slide, but this is the annual amount that we need to pay for the, all of the sewer phases, the debt service that were, for the phases that were completed after 2005. And then for our reserves, when you're looking at the forecast, I just want to take a moment and explain that none of the budget projections that you're looking at rely on any planned use of reserves from our general stabilization fund. Our financial plan going forward in future years involves maintaining the stabilization fund at an adequate level and dedicating a million dollars per year towards the town's growing OPEB liability for retiree health insurance costs, which we'll discuss in more detail under Article Three. The town ended fiscal year 13 with $894,000 in free cash, and as you know, town meeting knows, the amount varies from year to year. Last year, may recall, that free cash was much higher. At that time, we had a number of non-recurrent And lastly, that would, just to let you know that the project of eighteen point one million to date, we've expensed four million, seven oh nine, which is fifty-nine percent in four months.
Good evening. Tonight, I'd like to provide you with some highlights of our annual five-year financial forecast. When you went to the room this evening, there were copies of the detailed forecast available on the information table, so in the interest of time, we're just going to hit some of the highlights in this presentation. First, we'll take a look at revenues, expenditures, and then look at the overall summary. Under revenue, for fiscal year fifteen, our largest source continues to be property taxes. So under state law, we start with our levy base of seventy-eight point seven million, and that's a historical figure based on the prior year's levy limit. And then we add a two-and-a-half percent increase allowed, which is about one point nine six million, and then estimated new growth of about a million. And then finally, we add five point one million for excluded debt service for the sewer, school, and public works projects. And this gives us a total of about eighty-six point seven million that can be raised through property taxes. The, I should mention, our excluded debt service declines about four hundred and eighty-nine thousand next fiscal year, and it continues a downward trend each year after that, and we'll take a look at that in more detail. Next, state aid is our second-largest revenue source, and within that, chapter seventy-eight is our largest single account, and we're estimating that that will increase about two hundred thousand a year going forward in the forecast. The second-largest account in state aid is unrestricted general government aid, and we're estimating that will increase about a hundred thousand per year. And as we know from past years, looking at this, the state aid, the level of state aid that we receive is highly dependent on state collections of personal income and capital gains taxes, so state aid is always a variable. And then moving on to available funds, this is, in this revenue category, it's really a collection of various reimbursements from a number of revolving funds and special purpose funds. And in fiscal year fifteen, I just want to explain, we have a new category this year, the first item. And as you all recall, the athletic field project in town was funded through a combination of private fundraising, community preservation funds, and revolving fund revenue. And so this amount is the fiscal year fifteen amount that will be used to pay the non-CPF for the revolving fund portion of the debt service. Second, childcare, the school childcare department will continue to reimburse for employee benefits costs for those employees, and that will, we're estimating that will increase about seven percent, just to keep pace with healthcare expenditures. And then finally, sewer betterment and capital improvement funds. We'll take a look at this more in detail on a future slide, but this is the annual amount that we need to pay for the, all of the sewer phases, the debt service that were, for the phases that were completed after two thousand and five. And then for our reserves, when you're looking at the forecast, I just want to take a moment and explain that none of the budget projections that you're looking at rely on any planned use of reserves from our general stabilization fund. Our financial plan going forward in future years involves maintaining the stabilization fund at an adequate level and trying to, and dedicating a million dollars per year towards the town's growing OPEB liability for retiree health insurance costs, which we'll discuss in more detail under Article Three. The town ended fiscal year thirteen with eight hundred and ninety-four thousand in free cash, and as you know, town meeting knows, the amount varies from year to year. Last year may recall that free cash was much higher. At that time, we had a number of non-recurring or one-time revenue sources that affected it. Next, we'll take a little closer look at stabilization. And this chart shows a history of the stabilization fund since two thousand and four, and then the updated plan going forward. You can see there are no planned withdrawals from the fund for fiscal year fourteen, and with a limited amount of free cash, we're not seeking an appropriation to the fund tonight under Article Five. You can see our stabilization balance is projected to reach about six point four percent at the end of fiscal year fourteen. And although we're above the five percent minimum that our financial policies call for, we really want to try to get back. You can see fiscal year twelve, we were around seven point six, we were right over the midpoint. And then here's the same data, but to show you as a graph form. You can see when you look at the graph that we made, the town's made progress in the last several years. You can see as we came out of the trough here in the, from the recession, we hit a high point there in fiscal year twelve, and that's something we really want to try to get back, get back to that area as, 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 as free cash allows. And the, one of the main reasons that it's important to keep stabilization at a healthy level is that it was a key factor in standard and pause decision to upgrade our bond rating back in June of two thousand and twelve. It also allows the town to borrow at a lower cost, and it gives us financial flexibility for any unforeseen emergencies or opportunities that arise. And then on other post-employment benefits, I just want to take a moment to touch on this. When we spoke with you, when presented to town meeting about a year ago, at that time, the, the most up-to-date valuation that we had of our liability was that it was calculated based on January first, two thousand and eleven, and it was a hundred and sixty-eight point eight million. This past summer, the town hired a professional actuarial firm. They completed a detailed study, we're using data as of January first, and the actuarial liability is eighty-six point seven million, and that's a, that's a decrease of about eighty-two million. And it's, there's a, that's a big decrease, and I want to just explain to you, there are two key reasons for that. First and foremost is the town's adoption, town meeting's support, board of selectmen, town managers work on this, that when, when the town adopted municipal health insurance reform, it changed, it basically, it reduced future benefits and brought them down to a more manageable level. The plans were redesigned, brought in line with the typical GIC plans that are available. And so that significantly decreased the liability that they had to, for all the assumptions they had to make in the study. The second key reason for this decrease is that last year, when town meeting embarked on the plan to transfer one million into the OPEB liability trust fund, once a town starts making partial funding commitments, we are able, under government accounting standards, to use a higher assumed rate of return, because the, the philosophy is that if a town's making contributions into the trust fund, you're going to be earning investment returns on those, on those funds, and you'll be able to build it up over time. This slide shows the OPEB trust funding plan going forward, and I'm pleased to report that since we met together last October, the town has transferred all its OPEB assets to the Commonwealth State Retiree Benefits Trust Fund, and we were able to do that on January first. And for the six-month period ending June thirtieth, we earned a annualized return of about eight point eight percent. So with the, with the stock market doing well, the investment's doing very well, we, we were able to do well, because that's a, that's a highly diversified fund. And if you look here, let's see, if you look on the second line down, you see last year we transferred in a million dollars. The proposal this year is to transfer in just below a million, it's nine hundred and ninety-eight thousand, and you can see the plan going forward. And the one million dollars with our lower valuation represents about forty-three percent of what we would need to be depositing in this fund to totally pay down this liability over a thirty-year period. One of the, one of the key things you want to see on here is that, you'll notice on this slide, is that if we go forward and we deposit a million dollars from free cash each year into this fund, you can see that by two thousand and twenty-four, we'll have about twenty million dollars when you compound the investment returns. And the one thing that, and although that sounds like a sizable sum, and it is, it's important that we don't lose sight of the fact that since we're not able to contribute our full amount into the OPEB liability trust fund, the green portion on the bottom is the amount of the assets as they're growing. You can see they start from about one million now and go to about twenty million by two thousand and twenty-four. However, we can't lose sight of the fact that our unfunded actuarial accrued liability, or UAL for short, over that same time period keeps increasing, and by two thousand and twenty-four, it will be about a hundred and thirty million dollars. So it's important, whenever we do have funding available, to try to do our best to stick to that schedule and try to accumulate assets in the OPEB liability trust going forward. Under revenues, our last component is local receipts, and as you know from past years, motor vehicle excise tax is the largest single component, it accounts for about fifty percent of this, and we're, we're estimating eight point five million in local receipts for fiscal year fifteen. The rest of local receipts is made up of a variety of fines, fees, and permit revenue. And we'll have a much better idea of motor vehicle excise taxes after the major billing commitment comes to us this coming January first. I will say that based on trends we've seen, the economy seems to be getting better, and people are buying more, more new vehicles, so motor vehicle receipts are up. Moving on to expenditures, the forecast includes a two percent cost of living raise and steps for eligible personnel. Under the municipal facilities budget, you'll see a new offset line in there called general government energy savings. And for the purposes of this exercise, it's all shown on one line. It will not be deducted exactly that way, but this represents all of the savings for the ESCO contract that Mr. Persicetti spoke of earlier in his presentation. And then for the Chumsford Public Schools, the figures in the five-year forecast are based on their five-year forecast minus a proportional amount for the energy savings generated by all the ESCO improvements in the schools. So that's a new item. And then finally, under education, Neshoba Valley Tech, based on the October first counts, as our representatives have reported to us, we're, we're including an increase of about two hundred and sixty thousand for our Neshoba assessment. We have seventeen new Chumsford students attending in Neshoba Valley Tech, so this will bring our total number to one seventy-one, so Chumsford students will now make up an even larger share than the Shoba student population. And then we move on to employee benefits. The, the forecasted increase for the Middlesex County retirement system is six point four percent for the coming fiscal year, and then four point five percent thereafter. We're including an amount, health, health, health insurance costs, as we all know, run the gamut, but for the sake of this exercise, we're using seven percent as, as an increase. Moving on to debt service, and what I'm going to do is, since you have this data in front of you, I'm going to forward to the graph so we can talk about it, and you can see the trends on the graph. Excluded debt is currently five point six million in this fiscal year. It's going to decline to five point one million next fiscal year, and then four point seven for fiscal year sixteen. And as you can see, it's shown in red, you can see visually how it declines each year going forward. Non-excluded debt, which is shown in blue on the graph, it's currently five point seven four million for this fiscal year. It bumps up to just over seven million, and it's going to stay within seven point one to seven point three million range for fiscal years fifteen and eighteen, and that's primarily because of the energy services contract that will be, will be paying those bonds off. You'll see that it takes a step down right here in two thousand and nineteen, and the reason for that is where we will have retired the Adams Library and Center School bonds at that point. And then finally, our betterment funded debt service, which is shown in yellow on the graph, that, as you can see, it's going to remain around two point four million a year for the foreseeable future. And then we go to the summary page, and since you have this in front of you, I'm just going to forward to the last slide, since it's a lot easier to read, it's the same data. And to sum it all up, revenues and expenditures for fiscal year fifteen, assuming that we, assuming that we have essentially level-funded state aid and a level services budget, it appears that we'll be able to produce a balanced budget for fiscal year fifteen. Going forward in the forecast, you see that for fiscal year sixteen, we're, at this point, we're projecting a deficit of about seven hundred thousand. It then bumps up from seventeen through fiscal year nineteen. And the one thing I would say that we've said in years past is, when you look at the five-year forecast, you know, we tend to be conservative estimating revenues, so at this point, even though these deficits, you can see they range from point six percent of the budget up through two point four percent in the outer years, I'm confident that we can manage those. As we get closer to the years, we usually have a lot of, a lot usually goes on during a five-year period. So to sum it all up, we have a, we have a positive story. Our local revenue sources continue to remain strong. We're assuming essentially level-funded state aid with the economy continuing to improve slowly, and in the, you know, in the country and the state, we're seeing gradual economic improvement. It may be slow, but it seems to be getting better. So with that, I'll conclude, and if there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer those.
Okay, that's it for Article One of Report. At this time, I would...
Hi. I know you guys work very hard to try and balance, Beth Logan, Precinct Three, to try and balance the budget, and we've been through economic times, but you, the very first slide assumed right away that we were going to raise taxes to get the last two-and-a-half percent, and I'm wondering why we don't make the assumption that we're not, and then as needed, we know we have that buffer. But immediately, we start with, we're going to raise them, and I only ask this because I have never had my taxes raised by only two-and-a-half percent. So when you start with that assumption, it says to me, five to seven percent.
Mr. Moderator.
The very first slide showed the two-and-a-half percent assumption, and that we're going to immediately start with the assumption that we're raising the taxes.
Is this going to, I, I have a question. Is this going to be presented in a later article?
It's, it's really, the charter requires that we present a five-year forecast. I, if you, if you would permit, I, I can address the question, or I can...
Go ahead.
One of the, one of the challenges we have is that, you know, no one likes to raise taxes, but the reality is that we have is that for, for both the Chumsford Public Schools and the general government side, we have fixed costs that increase each year. So although I, I wish we didn't have to, the, to meet our fixed costs that increase, we, unfortunately, we, it's just a fact of the financing, I mean.
Maria Carafellis, Precinct Two. John, the OPEB slide, if I remember correctly, at pre-town meeting with the town manager, he had mentioned the eight hundred and ninety-four thousand going into the OPEB. Where did you get the nine hundred and ninety-nine thousand?
Okay. Yeah, that's going to, in a separate article, Maria, you'll see, we're going to be seeking town meeting approval to do a transfer from the sewer enterprise fund to fund the, fund the OPEB obligation for the sewer division employees. So when you add those two together, it comes to the nine ninety...
All right, great. Now I remember. Thank you.
Tom Moran, Precinct Eight. A couple of questions. Our present liability is what, about eighty-four million dollars?
Yes.
As you...
Roughly about eighty-six, we'll say eighty-seven to round it off.
In, in your revenue forecast, that you, the particular chart doesn't show a continued increase of two-and-a-half percent a year. Is that in there? We, we have increased taxes on homeowners every year for two-and-a-half percent for a significant period of time, I think it's twelve years. I'm wondering if your revenue projection includes a two-and-a-half percent per year.
Yes. If you, on the detailed forecast, it may not show in the slide, but on page three at the very top, you'll see it says, under local taxes, second line down, two-and-a-half percent increase. So that's built in...
Yeah, to the forecast, yeah. Per year, right?
Per year.
So a ten-year continued two-and-a-half percent increase is not twenty-five percent, it's closer to thirty-three percent because it's compounded. So that's what the homeowners are looking at...
Yes.
...in Chumsford, if we continue to add debt to this budget, this projection.
The OPEB, the, well, we're not borrowing to fund OPEB. The OPEB is a liability, but we're not going out and borrowing, you know, to...
But we're not borrowing, but we're taxing the homeowner, additional taxes.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Forgetful Claire Genaut, Precinct Seven. Thank you for your presentation. We took a million five out of the stabilization in fifteen, thirteen, and I forget why.
That was for the, to fund the phase of the DPW facility at Alpha Road.
Okay. Was there some reason, I was thinking that maybe it was an earlier year, that, give it to me now, and I promise you'll get it back, kind of question? Was I thinking of something different?
We, we did discuss that at last year's town meeting, and we did, we did originally say that we, I'll, I'll go to the stabilization chart.
There we go.
When that was presented, right, and you'll see right here, here's the withdrawal of the one point five million that you spoke of, that, that following, that October and April, that was the plan. In October, at that time, free cash was limited, and we, and you, you may recall, there were a number of plans on how the free cash should be spent. The consensus that everyone agreed on was that we would do our best, but we, we had about five hundred and thirty-five thousand available to deposit into the general stabilization fund. So our original hope was to be able to, you know, replenish the one point five, but that's, that's the reason.
Oh, maybe I'm not as forgetful as I thought. Thank you. So the whole million five went to the DPW project.
Yes, that's correct. And the plan there was to avoid borrowing for it.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Speaker. Bill Griffin, Precinct Nine. Three quick questions, nobody queued up behind me here. First question, Paul, or, or to, to Pat, with the, the new addition going in at, at Town Hall and, and the energy upgrades and stuff, have we determined if there's asbestos presence and mitigation, what kind of activities are underway for that?
Yes, we've had an asbestos surveyed on, there are no costs of, significant cost implications, so that work has been incorporated into the fire station project.
So we did have to mitigate for present?
Yes.
Okay.
It was insignificant.
As far as the, the addition to the, to the golf course, was there any, did that play have anything to do in terms of the, the maintenance of the course itself? I, I got a number of complaints about the condition of the course this year.
No, no, the condition of the course was, was basically due to the weather conditions. Basically, it was a very dry summer, and they, they had some difficulties in some of the greens, not only in Chumsford, but in a few other communities. It was a wet June, and it got real dry, but it had nothing to do with the clubhouse facility.
Okay. Last quick question, in terms of the energy savings plan, we, was mentioned in the installation of equipment like transformers at the forum. Do we have a, a plan in place to recoup our, our investments in the infrastructure there if the state ever comes back in to reclaim the facility?
No. What we have is under the legislation that was passed fifteen years ago, in five years from this point, the town has the option, under that legislation, to purchase the forum at the then-market value of the forum, less the town's capital improvements. And as we approach that, the board of selectmen and obviously town meeting will be giving that consideration. So yes, I think the intent is to address that in the five, in the five years that comes ahead. Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. That's it for Reports. Before we start with Article Two, I am granting Patrice Garvin, who is the Chairman of the Finance Committee, a point of personal privilege.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. I just wanted to let this body know that I will have to be resigning as the Chairman of the Finance Committee, and it's with a lot of regret. I have currently become the town administrator in Shirley, so I will no longer be able to serve on this committee.[1681.13][1681.13](APPLAUSE). I, I do want to thank a couple of people I wanted to thank, Moderator Dick Defradis for the opportunity to serve on the board. It's been a great experience, and I leave behind a very capable and knowledgeable finance committee, and I have no doubt that they will continue to inform you and the rest of the community. I also want to thank Paul for all your help as well. So with that, thank you.[1712.03][1712.03](APPLAUSE).
As a result, it's obvious that I have yet another Finance Committee appointment to make.[1724.63][1724.63](LAUGHTER). So all of those that are interested, or if you know someone that's interested, please get your application to me. I don't create these appointments, but I fill them according to the charter. Now, Article Two.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. As we approach the financial articles, we, I just wanted to give a status, you've just heard the five-year forecast. This is the status of the town's reserves as we come into town meeting. Our general stabilization fund is just over seven million dollars, or roughly six point four percent of our operating budget, as John said, below the midpoint of our five-to-ten percent policy. Our free cash for the year that ended June thirtieth was certified by the Massachusetts Department of Revenue at just under nine hundred thousand dollars, and our sewer enterprise fund free cash is one point three million dollars. And again, the sewer operations are funded separately from the town's operations. As we go to the first article for the sewer enterprise, we're seeking to transfer from sewer enterprise free cash, the sum of a hundred and nineteen thousand, two hundred and ninety-eight dollars to the sewer construction stabilization fund. And I'm going to ask our Finance Director, John Souza, to speak briefly to this article, because John handles the investments. because John handles the investments.
As many of you know, this has become an annual article, and the sewer construction stabilization fund is actually, it's one of three accounts that we're going to need. On my earlier slide, when I spoke of the 2.4 million a year that's needed to pay off the sewer debt service, the town has a long-range plan. It goes to about 18 years out, and that's when the last phase of the sewer debt service will be paid off. And we will need a combination of sewer betterment money, sewer capital improvement funds, as well as all of the interest that we earn on the sewer betterment funds and capital improvement funds, we are asking town meeting to appropriate into this special purpose stabilization fund each year. So just to let the body know, this is an important part of our long-range sewer debt service financing plan.
We are now in the question and answer period. Seeing none, we have a recommendation from the Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee unanimously voted in favor of this article.
Recommendation from the Board of Selectmen.
Board of Selectmen recommends approval. It was also unanimous.
We're in the debate section. Any debate? Use the pro and con microphones, whether you're for or against. Seeing none, this is a two-thirds vote. Please use the one, two, three numbers on your clicker, and one is yes, two is no, three is abstain, and go. Okay, go. Okay, let's do a show of hands. All those in favor, raise your hands. Opposed? Moderator recognizes a two-thirds vote. Mr. Lane.
Mr. Moderator, Jim Lane, 290 Old Westford Road. I'm a Precinct Seven town meeting rep. I make a motion to postpone Article Three regarding a transfer of free cash until after Article Nine has been voted on.
This is a debatable motion, cannot be amended, and it only requires a majority. Is there any discussion? The motion is to postpone Article Three regarding a transfer from free cash until after Article Nine has been voted on. All those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it. Article Four, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Under Article Four, we're seeking a transfer of $104,153 from the sewer enterprise free cash to the other post-employment benefits liability trust fund, or the OPEB trust fund. And I don't want to be repetitive of what the Finance Director, John Souza, spoke of earlier. As we stated, the town has a real liability for current employees and retiree health insurance. What we do is we calculate for the employees in the general fund, and we also calculate for those who are in the sewer division, sewer operations. And basically, what we do is we have a 30-year schedule in which to pay off that liability in a 30-year period. What we're requesting under this article is to take $104,153 of the 1.3 million in the sewer enterprise free cash, to basically pay this fund through 2014, the fiscal year that we're in right now. What is the impact of that? Well, basically, what would happen is, is we're required by law, every two years, to do an actuarial valuation of this liability for retiree health insurance, much like our pension system has to do a liability assessment every 20 years. If you make this payment, and when we do the next study in two years, we'll then ask for a 28-year schedule of liability. And as you can see, we would then go down to 26 and go all the way down, so that we would pay off this liability and not leave those who come after us with an unfunded payment in debt for their costs, much like we're paying $4 million a day, a year, for the unfunded pension liability by those who came before us. So we ask this in the essence of financial responsibility, and also paying our true costs as we go for the services that we receive today. Thank you.
Any questions? Seeing none, does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
The Finance Committee unanimously is in favor of this article.
Board of Selectmen.
Board of Selectmen recommends approval. It was also unanimous.
Debate. Ted, are we ready? Okay. Show of hands. All those in favor, raise your clickers. All those opposed? Unanimous. Stand corrected, there was one no. Article Five has been pulled. It's a no action. Article Six, Mr. Manager.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Under Article Six, this is a perennial article. We deal at the fall annual town meeting, in which we transfer the actual amount that the town receives for the E-Rate reimbursement, which is a federal program to provide affordable telecommunications and internet access. We take the amount we received in the prior year, and then fund it for the upcoming year for the cost for the school department, which participates in this program. This year, the dollar amount is $48,723.
Questions? Finance Committee recommendation?
The Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval.
Board of Selectmen.
Board of Selectmen also unanimously recommends approval.
Debate. Seeing none, by show of hands. All those in favor? Opposed? This time, it's unanimous. Article Seven, I have a standing motion from Matt Hanson to waive the reading of the article. It's a standing motion. You vote on this once, and it'll be standing in front of the long articles. All those in favor of the standing motion to waive the reading of the article? Opposed? Some moved. Article Seven, Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article Seven deals with our collective bargaining agreements. We're seeking an appropriation of $70,202 to fund three-year, first year of three-year collective bargaining agreements with the following four unions: the public safety dispatchers, the library, the Public Works Association, and the cemetery. Many of you may recall, at the spring annual town meeting, we brought before you, approved three-year collective bargaining agreements with the clerical, firefighters, and public facilities unions. Basically, all of these agreements that we brought to you to date, and including those that don't come to you, such as the school department agreements pertaining to the school teachers, school administrators, and so forth, have been settled for three-year contracts and the amount of a 2% increase in the employee compensation schedule per year, which is roughly in line with what we're seeing now in terms of the wage increase provided for Social Security and so forth. At this point in time, the only unions that we have not reached agreement with are the Police Superior Officers Union and the Police Patrol Officers Union. So we respect your funding for these contracts. Thank you.
Any questions? Seeing none, recommendation from the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval.
Board of Selectmen.
Board of Selectmen also unanimously recommends approval.
Any debate? Seeing none, we'll take a hand vote again.
He's all set. He's all set.
Are you all set? Okay, let's go for it. Unanimous vote in favor.
John, I'm going to call you up for this article. I'll introduce you.
Article Eight, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Under Article Eight, basically, this is amendments to the budget, the operating budget for the year that began on July 1st, that you approved at the spring annual town meeting. I'm pleased to report to you this evening, we're basically making no changes in the budget you adopted this past spring. However, since the spring town meeting, we've actually gone out to the bond markets, incurred the funding for the energy project and other projects, and I'll ask our Finance Director, John Souza, to summarize the changes in our debt service budget.
As the Town Manager indicated, we had a bond sale back in August, and we actually financed a number of the projects that Town Meeting approved since we last were together here about six months ago and approved the fiscal year 14 operating budget. And as you know, we usually approve the debt service budget on three different light items, so I'm just going to run through and explain each one of those. The first one is our non-excluded debt service. We're seeking an increase of $625,057. The reason for that is the energy services contract that we spoke of earlier tonight. That's, the bonds were sold, and as you remember, it's a large, it's an 18 million-plus project for a number of our town and municipal buildings. On the excluded debt side, we're actually seeking a decrease of $37,881. The reason is that we refinanced an older 2004 sewer bond at a lower interest rate. So it's the same. We didn't issue any more bonds. We just refinanced an existing one at a lower interest rate. So that's the savings for this fiscal year. And then finally, we're seeking to reduce the betterment funded debt by $10,386. As most of you know, most of the sewer project is financed with low-interest Mass Water Pollution Abatement Trust bonds that are issued through the State Treasurer's Office, and this is actually Chumsford's share of a legal settlement reached between the State Treasurer's Office and Goldman Sachs on an alleged fee overcharge problem. So that's Chumsford's share of the savings on that.
Any questions? Recommendations, Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval.
Board of Selectmen.
Board of Selectmen unanimously recommends approval.
We go to the vote. Go. Vote is one thirty, one yea, one no, one abstain. Article passes. Article Nine, Mr. Manager.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is an article, we're requesting an extra $500,000 to fund the Newt Center Fire Headquarters facility. I'm going to ask Pat Maloney, the Chair of the Permanent Building Committee, to present on this article.
Thank you, Paul. Good evening, everybody. Throughout the last several years, maybe 10 years or more, I've been very fortunate to come before this body with only good news. So I guess we all have our days, and today is my day to bring some bad news to this body. And that is that when we bid the fire station, we came in somewhat over budget. We received the GC bids, general contractor bids recently. We recognized at that time that we were over budget. However, we did proceed and move forward to the Board of Selectmen to ask to enter into the contract for the new construction portion of the contract, so that we did not lose the bid. The bidding climate has changed considerably in the past year, and we had some filed sub-bids that came in that were problematic, three of them to speak of, and I'll go into that a little bit further here shortly. Talk about the process a little bit first. So this body approved a $7.8 million funding of the new station back in April of 2012. The budget was set at $7.8 million. So what we do is we go out and hire architects and engineers and designers, and throughout that process, we hire cost estimators to come in and give us cost estimates. So the first few cost estimates came in, and they looked favorable. We were tight, but we were still able to, or it looked like we could get the project done with the money that we had, and still maintain a sizable contingency amount for that project. Also, when we got the funding back in 2012, we were in a very stable bidding environment. We hadn't seen any real escalation since fall of 2008, when the economy started to go down. So things looked good until about early this year, when we were rounding the corner to a 75% completion of the design. As we moved on, we realized that, at that time, that we were looking like we were going to be about $50,000 over budget. So we went back, we did some value engineering with the architects, the engineers. Chief Curran was involved in that, and so we went in and scraped out what we thought we could get out of the project to make sure that we came in on budget. And when we went out to bids, we were hoping for general contract bids to come in just under $6 million. So we've seen some heavy escalation this year. I'm guessing we've seen about eight to 10% escalation in the past year alone in construction. But if you think about it, you know, it kind of goes in line with the escalation that we've all seen in housing and so on. So this is where we are. So we got the filed sub-bids in a week before the general contractor bids. We had three large problems with a couple of those filed sub-bids. First of all was the elevator. We carried $146,000 for an elevator for the building. We had had recent experience with two elevators, one for the North Town Hall and one for the Center Town Hall. Both of those cost between $110,000 and $120,000. So we carried $146,000 for this elevator, and the low bid came in at $299,000. We only had one bid on that. Years ago, we had... Years ago, we had a similar situation happen on the schools, where we only got one bid, and we were able to go back out because the law allowed for us to go back out and solicit more interest and get more bidders. They've since changed that law, so we can't, after a discussion with the Attorney General's Office, we can't go back and disqualify that bid because it's the only bid we received. It's a formal bid, and we need to receive it, so we're stuck with the $299,000 instead of the $146,000. This has happened quite a bit on a couple other public projects that we've looked into, at which there's been many, many public projects in the state this year that have come in over budget, catching most people off surprise. So that's the elevator situation. We had high steel bids that came in twice, and again, we were around $150,000 that we had estimated. Our cost estimators were fairly certain that we wouldn't see that type of escalation, but we came in at about $300,000 over budget on the steel. So there's $300,000 of the cost. The final problem that we had was with the electrical bid. Our low bidder, who actually has done work for us in the past, he recently, the electrical contractor, had recently done our two town halls, and I think he did another project for us somewhere along the way. But anyway, he came in low bid, he was about $70,000 lower than the next guy. The very next morning, we get a letter from the guy saying that he made a critical math error in his bid, and that he was withdrawing his bid. Now, we could pursue his bid bond and get into some legal wrangling, I guess, to try to hold him to his bid, but I think we'd be wasting time and resources. Our feeling was that he didn't like leaving $70,000 on the table, so he pulled his bid, probably knowing that we wouldn't pursue him. The second bidder, electrical bidder, that we went to filled out his paperwork wrong, so we weren't able to go to him. We had to go to the third bidder on the electrical. All of this was discussed with the Attorney General's Office to see what our options were. We kind of got stuck. So you can see how it quickly rises to the point of, you know, getting us over budget in this situation. So we're here. We have awarded the new construction portion to BW Construction from Spencer, Mass., who incidentally built our police station years back. Good contractor, good references, so he's extended his wish to work with us to try to help us through this. So he's looking for ways to save some money along the way. We have a couple of things that we can look at, and I want to let you know that many times these things are fluid, wherein we find dollars along the way. For instance, it just came to our attention that there were some final changes to the foundation just before bid. It looks like we'll be able to lower the building slightly or enough so that we can possibly get rid of some retaining walls and try to get some money back that way. So we're constantly looking to see if there's something different we can do along the way or something that may not be necessary. So this is where we are. We're searching for every dollar that we can find, but we felt compelled because of the bidding climate and the fact that the economy keeps getting stronger, to ask the board of selectmen to allow us to move ahead to do that, the new construction portion and get into that contract. And we have since done that. So options at the time were to rebid the project. We didn't think that was a good idea because we felt that with the economy getting stronger, we'd lose out even more. The other option was to ask for the additional $500,000 that we thought we needed to complete the project. So we're here, we've decided to do that. We weren't crazy about this. If we were not to receive the money to complete this tonight, which I think would be a shame because we need to get these guys what they need and what they've been needing for a very long time, but we have a way to fund it without, what we would do is we would eliminate the renovation portion within the existing town office building, along with a few other items, and we'd just make the new construction work until we can come back and get the additional funding to get them the training room and the administrative office space that they need. So that's how it went down, that's where we are today. I don't see a need to come back for any money in the future. If we were to receive the $500,000 in additional funding this evening, that leaves us with a $200,000 contingency out of that. So we feel that our exposure here at this point is just coming out of the ground with the new foundation. However, we have solid geotech reports that suggest that we're not going to have a problem. We feel confident that we can manage the project with the $200,000 in contingency, and really, the exposure or the risk is getting out of the ground. Once we're out of the ground, we feel strongly that it's a very manageable project. So having said all that, we're here to ask for an additional $500,000 in funding for this project.
Are there any questions?
Glad you're not, Precinct 7. Patrick, I have a schedule from September 4th, a budget summary that shows $484,000 shortfall after you opened these bids. I'm assuming these numbers are still valid because you've rounded up to the $500,000. Is that a fair assumption?
It's a fair assumption.
Okay. So in here, it shows the Boucher subcontract for Phase 1 had a budget of $518,696. Wasn't that awarded at a much lower amount, like in the $438,000 range?
I don't remember the exact figures of that.
Maybe somebody could answer the question?
Do you remember what the contract amount was? Well, if you're referring to the additional, there was additional monies expense wherein we took as part of the parking lot construction, we needed to get the lighting in. So we gave Boucher a change order to install all the solar lighting, which brought the contract up to that amount.
Back up to the budget number?
That's correct. So it was going to be spent one way or another, and originally, it was going to be in the overall building general contractors package, but we had changed our minds. Which incidentally, by doing it that way and issuing a change order, we were able to get the lights that we wanted, which are the new solar lighting, and it kept us from going into the public procurement phase, putting us at further risk down the road.
All right, thank you.
Andy Sillings, Precinct 7. I have a couple of questions on that one bid, and we must take it, as it was explained to us by you last week. So I was thinking about that, what if you didn't have the money, the town didn't have the money, and they would say, "Well, I'm going to have a redesign completely, how are we going to do that?" Are we allowed to do that? Is the town council would say, is that within?
I can tell you that we do have the option to go back into redesign and try to pare down the costs somewhat of the elevator itself, but that would probably take several months, and I and the Permanent Building Committee were concerned at the time when we discussed this, that, you know, with the escalation we've seen over the past year, it doesn't look like we're going to go backwards. It looks like we're going to keep going forward. That could put us, if we did choose to do that, we felt like we would put ourselves at further risk for even a higher budget deficit.
Next question about that is, what if we knew that the price was really, you know, way out, like three times as much that can be done? Is there any recourse that the town has at that, if it was?
The way we do our contracts is we always put a clause in our contracts that if we come in over budget, it's up to the designer to go back and redesign the project to get us within budget. But in this instance here, again, we didn't feel like there was such major redesign that could be done to pare down the budget. So we do have the ability to go back and have the architects and engineers actually do a redesign effort, but again, it was the situation where we thought that we would be at further risk for budget deficits.
Have we contacted the companies that didn't bid and asked them for a formal reply of why they didn't bid?
There's only four or five elevator companies in the whole state of Massachusetts now. Oddly enough, I can tell you that some of the projects, you know, when this happens, we go back and we start looking not only at our project, but we looked at several other projects that have come in overbid this year. I can tell you, the Harvard Town Hall had just one elevator bid that was twice their budget. So there's been a few like this, and we, you know, when there's only four or five contractors, you know, and only a couple of state inspectors, who knows what happens and why only one bidder might bid something, but, you know.
Bob Joyce, Precinct 1. Did you say that you had to take the third bidder on the electrical?
On the electrical, that's correct.
And what was the delta between the top one and him?
It cost us about $70,000.
Okay. Now, could that portion of the bid have been rebid because we had got multiple bids on it?
No, we have to go to the next bidder under state procurement laws.
Oh, okay, so you can't bid it, you can't reject all bids and?
No, we could reject all of the bids and go back out, but again...
But that would be everything, that would be electrical.
But you can't necessarily pick, well, I guess to, if it's a filed subbid, we can go back out again. We had to do that on the high school project when we came in over on the mechanical work. We came in like a million dollars over budget on that and went back and did some redesign and refined that and got that down to where we needed to do it. But again, the climate was a little bit different at that point.
Because I thought the reason we couldn't rebid the elevator was because we had only got one bid.
That's correct. But we had several, we probably got half a dozen electrical bids.
Okay.
So we had other people to go to and move down the line.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Moderator, Bill Griffin, Precinct 9. Pat, seeing as you sort of raised the point and laid the question bare, you mentioned that Harvard only had one bidder for their elevator, and you also mentioned that we can't go out and rebid the project, and you've talked to the Attorney General. Have we been aggressive in following up with them to make sure that there isn't any type of collusion or price fixing going on from these limited suppliers?
You said that, I didn't, Bill. I'm not going to sit here and make...
So without answering that type of question, are we being aggressive with our state agencies to investigate the limited bids?
As much as we are allowed, and, you know, if there's one thing that we could all do a little lobbying for would be to make, you know, the public procurement process a little bit more fair to municipalities and to towns, because there's a lot of things that work against us in these types of things.
Thank you.
Jim Como, Precinct 4. Pat, I had a question about the renovations on the town hall. Was that a separate bid? Would it renovate the parts of the town hall?
No, it was all under one bid. So we have gone forward because we had the funding to complete the new construction. The builder, the general contractor that we have hired, is anxiously waiting for a phone call tomorrow morning to tell him whether he is going to move ahead with the renovation portion or if we're going to start to pull that work out of the contract.
How much of the cost of the renovation of the town hall?
We estimate that to be around $250,000.
Dave McLaughlin, Precinct 6. Town meeting appropriate at $7.8 million?
That's correct.
And you're looking for another $500,000, so does that mean the cost to complete the project is 8.3 million?
That's correct.
And what was the contingency in the 7.8 million?
$300,000. We reduced that down to $200,000 in this scenario.
Are all of the line items gone out to bid, and do we have bids for all the line items now?
We're safe, and we are very confident that there'd be no reason to come back and ask for any more funding at all. And I just want to say that, you know, when you think about the fact that we spent $7.2 million over 10 years ago for a police station, and, you know, the money that we put into libraries, and the fact that towns like Townsend and Westford are looking at $12 million and $15 million firehouses respectively, I think it's still a bargain at 8.3 million.
What are contingencies for if not for this, and why don't we use it all since everything has gone out to bid?
Well, we expect that there'll be some issues that come along that will require us to utilize the contingency. At that point, if we have monies left over, you know, because of the fact that we've had to come back to the well, so to speak, you know, in my mind, maybe we come back and say, "Okay, we have a little bit of money left over, do you want us to go spend it and, you know, increase, you know, what we're giving the guys, or do you want it back?" I hadn't really considered that at this point, but I thought that if there was monies left over in this instance, now, usually, I will tell you, David, that on the school project, town hall projects, we spent every penny that was allotted. In this instance, we're back asking for additional funding, and so I hadn't quite considered that we would try to spend every penny. Right now, it's about getting the project done.
I thought you said every line item had been bid, and we have bids in hand.
We do, but if we find...
Are they not all fixed-price contracts?
Well, they are, but if...
So what's the contingency for?
If the excavation contractor, for instance, gets in and finds a pocket of bad soil, or if we open up a wall when we get into the existing building, it's much like the town halls, we found all kinds of problems when we started opening things up. Now, you know, I have stated that our exposure is limited here, but we still see the need. I could say that we don't need the $200,000, but that would be a very high risk that we'd be back here asking this body again for additional funding.
So I think it's fair to say they are not all fixed-price contracts.
We have to deal with unforeseen conditions, which is a very real term within the construction industry. Anybody involved with construction has probably heard that term before, so we deal with things like unforeseen construction and so on.
Brian Latina, Precinct 4. You said the elevator, we had one bid, and one company bid on it, more or less doubled the expected price, and we paid somebody to do cost estimation so we know what the price should have been. Is that...
As well as we had experience just recently in our town hall bids, where we paid so much money for two separate elevators, and, you know, so when you look at the cost estimate, and it's $30,000 more than an elevator that we paid for two years ago, you know, it seems like a realistic number for what we're looking at.
And the state procurement process was changed recently so that you can't reject that one bid and go to the free market and say, "Hey, other four licensed in Massachusetts elevator companies, come on in, we expected this to be this price, it's double."
That's correct.
The state requires you to accept a single bid?
That's correct.
So if I was an elevator company and I bid $1 million, you'd have to accept it according to state law?
Well, at that point, we would probably throw out all the bids and start over.
Doubling...
If it was $1 million, you know, we wouldn't, you know, we just wouldn't have been able to afford it. But under these circumstances, you know, it's where we are. I mean, and we can still, we could, you know, cut, you know, some of the process out, but we just felt like the bidding climate was getting worse daily, so...
So doubling the price wasn't too far. And then, in the paper, it said, "We wanted to add $300,000 before town meeting for furniture, for new furniture, and $200,000 for contingency, but now we're saying it's for the renovation in the other building." $300,000?
Well, again, I mean, when we look at this, we wanted to move ahead to get the new construction portion of the building completed, and we had the funding available to do that. So we had to look, take a hard look if we were to move ahead of what the, you know, how would we move ahead? So the Permanent Building Committee deliberated and said that, you know, "Well, if we had to, we could eliminate the interior renovations to the lower level of town offices." I don't know what furniture funding you're talking about or anything like that, it was...
That was the first statement when it ran over, that was the first thing in the lull sun about, we needed another $300,000 for furniture. And then finally, this work doesn't slow those fire engines to my... And then finally, this work doesn't slow those fire engines to my house in any way, shape, or form if we voted no to the half million dollars to the taxpayer. It doesn't harm, I mean, you would just not do the renovation in the building that you said might have a problem if we get into it, into a wall or something.
But what we do is we put administration and the men in a situation where they're already over, that they'll be overcrowded moving into a new building because the administrative offices were to go into the existing town offices as well as a new training room that these guys so desperately need as well. So would it change the response time to your house? No. Are we putting them in in a good position and good situation and giving them far less than what they need? Yes.
You have no concerns over the renovation side coming into a problem now that we have no contingency?
We have 200, if we're funded the $500,000, we have $200,000 in contingency for unforeseen conditions.
Paul Gleason, Precinct Seven. How much will the additional annual appropriation be for debt for this $500,000?
If we borrow a bond, $500,000 over a 20-year period, we pay, now, towns, I'm like a level-funded mortgage that you would do with your home, where towns pay level principal. So basically, we're paying a lump sum principal of the $500,000 over a 20-year period, it's $20,000 per year. You know, over the 20-year period, basically, the first year's debt service payment would be $45,000 and then it decreases over the life of the project. Well, what happened in this instance is the half million dollars, we won't borrow that money until next June because we've got 7.8 available to us. The project is scheduled to be completed next September, so we're not going to need that money till next June. Basically, what that means is there will be no impact on the current fiscal year's budget, which the tax bills will be going out at the end of December. We will have an additional $45,000 within the levy limit that we'll have to set aside for principal and interest costs in the budget that we're going to be preparing and presenting to you next April for the year that starts on July 1. So short answer, $45,000 declining over a 20-year period.
Okay. Now, as we discussed last April when this original article came up, this will be non-excluded debt?
That's correct. This article is within the Proposition Two and a Half levy limit, which basically means we do not go to the ballot, we basically have to fund this within the limits of Proposition Two and a Half, yes. So basically, we're going to have to find that $45,000 and stay within the levy limit for the year ahead.
Okay, that was my final question about the Prop Two and a Half spending. Okay.
Any more questions? Seeing none, do we have a recommendation from the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval.
Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen recommends approval with four in favor and one abstention.
We are in the debate section.
Mr. Moderator, Jim Lane, Precinct Seven. I'd like to move to amend the main motion to provide as follows. I moved to transfer from free cash the sum of $500,000 for the purposes listed in Article Nine, such sum to be added to that previously appropriated under Article Ten of the April 30th, 2012 Spring Annual Town Meeting. Mr. Moderator, I do this as an alternative to continuing debt and putting it into the non-excluded bucket and paying it with surplus cash that we have from free cash.
This is an amendment to Article Nine. That's what's on the floor right now and it is debatable.
Is there a second?
Does it need a second? It needs a second.
Peggy Dunn, Precinct One. I would second that motion.
Okay, made in second. Amendment's on the floor.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to speak to the amendment.
Yep.
I basically, as town manager, as we noted earlier, I'm asking you to vote against this amendment and to bond the cost over a 20-year period, because I think what you're being presented with is a false choice. As we noted earlier this evening in the five-year forecast and in the article presentation, the one article that was passed over, but the one on the sewer enterprise, OPEB, we have a liability out there, folks. It's called other post-employment benefits or retiree health insurance. The Finance Director showed you that chart and he gave the information, it's $84.5 million. And right now, we should be paying, if we were to pay off that debt over a 30-year period, we should be appropriating $2.3 million per year to pay that off over a 30-year period. What we're asking for is to appropriate $1 million over that 30-year period. Instead, what's being proposed is to take that $1 million and drop it down to a half million. Take the $500,000 and instead of funding the other post-employment benefits liability, which should be a $2.3 million appropriation, we're going to drop it down to a half million appropriation. And I guess the point that I would say to you is, is that really not borrowing? Because what we're doing is we'll stick in the bill to those who come after us, because that's a real cost, that's not fantasy cost. That's a real cost. We have retirees today, we have active employees today who are going to retire, and under the state laws, they're entitled to property, to retiree health insurance. And as you know, people aren't living shorter, their life expectancy is longer, and that's what's done in the actuarial table. So yes, we can do the feel-good thing today and basically say, we're not going to bond the project, but instead, you're just transferring it for one cup, which is the debt service cup for the borrowing for the fire station, for all those users in the town who are going to use this fire station and benefit from it for probably 30 or 40 years and can pay that cost over that 20-year period, to those who come after us who are going to be paying this retiree health insurance cost, just like we're paying for the sins of those who came before us on the pension cost. Many of you may have read the story, it was in the newspaper last week from the Mass Taxpayers The underfunding by the Commonwealth and by its cities and towns on pension obligations and on retiree health insurance costs. Right now, we're paying $4 million towards pension liability insurance because those who came before us didn't pay their fair share. And under state law, we have to pay that off by 2036. So that's a real cost. If we don't fund this in terms of putting the money aside for the retiree health insurance cost, we're just setting the pins up for those who come after us who are going to have to pay that real cost. Because, oh yes, there'll be OPEB reform, but you know what? The Governor's Commission on OPEB Reform that finished its work this past summer and the legislation that's before the legislature, which of course, they didn't take up this session, but maybe they'll take up next session in an election year. What they're proposing has no funding requirement, so basically, it puts the buck off to another day and the analysis of that work requires that the, any impact of that OPEB pension reform, retiree health insurance obligation, won't have an impact on cities and towns for a decade. So yes, we can take the easy way out, and believe me, it'd be much popular for me or the Finance Director to come before you and say, you know what, we're going to go below the levy limit, we're going to keep your taxes down, but you know what, what we're really doing is putting it on the credit card and giving it to those who come after us. I really recommend that you vote against this amendment. Thank you.
Any other debate?
I have a question, and my question, I guess, would be, Paul, if this evening, we, the elevator aside, if we wanted to cut the $500,000 from this building, how can we do it? That's what I'd like to know before I vote on this.
How could you cut $500,000 out of the building?
Yeah, how could we do it?
You can vote a zero, and we will still, the Board of Selectmen have awarded this contract, as Pat noted earlier. What the contractor has done is, the contract was awarded about four weeks ago, the contractor, at our request, has not done any of the work in the current town office building that pertains to the fire prevention offices, the fire administrative offices, basically the chief's office, and the training room. So basically, that would save us a couple hundred thousand if we don't do that work. But that doesn't...
Would that come up to the $500,000?
That won't give you $500,000.
Well, how much will that give us?
That'll give us about $200,000.
$250,000.
$250,000. And then what we're going to do is we're then going to, we're going to continue, quote, "value engineer" the project to get to the half million, which is basically meaning we're now going to go to inferior HVAC systems and other modifications to the project so that we can get within the budget, because we feel it's that important to get a fire station. But what you're doing is penny wise and pound foolish, because what's going to happen is that work has to be done. And what's going to happen is if we don't do it now, we're going to be coming before you at a later date saying, gee, can we have the funding from the town so that we can provide the firefighters with an adequate training facility and that the chief and the Fire Prevention Bureau can have adequate offices? Again, my final point was, is we're talking an $8.3 million fire station. The town of Westford, as Pat noted earlier, they're asking for a $15 million fire station and the town of Townsend is asking for a $12.3. You're still getting a good value for your dollar.
I realize that, Paul, but this is our fifth fire station. We have four other fire stations.
This is the fire headquarters facility. This is not a, this is not a bay on Acton Road.
Point of order. I don't really want to argue with you, but I'm doing the order.
Which is a garage, this is the headquarters.
Yes, make your point.
Mr. Moderator, may I remind you that we are debating the amendment and not the main motion? Would you please instruct the questioners?
That is true.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Hi, Dennis Sheehan, Precinct Four. Actually, just have a question for the town manager. How are other towns managing this whole post-employee benefits? I mean, are we ahead of the curve, behind the curve, are we in the middle?
I'd say we're ahead of the curve. You may have just read within the last two months, the City of Lowell just put, I think it was $6, $7 million towards OPEB liability because they basically went to the GIC, did the health insurance reform, and they took the money that was in the balance of their employee and retiree health insurance trust fund and basically put it entirely towards their OPEB obligation. So yes, we're ahead of it. I mean, we're not at the place like a Wellesley, which Wellesley passed an override so that they could fully fund their exclusion, but my goal is, is to meet it responsibly, which means we're holding the line on staffing and on services and so that, yes, maybe that one million can grow over time, but we can get closer to that thing. We're ahead of the curve, but other towns are coming along to us, and you say, why? Because even though the legislature won't act in this, the bond rating agencies are, this is required to be reported in our financial statements and it affects the creditworthiness of the town of Chelmsford.
Let me remind you, the previous point of order, we're debating the amendment and not anything beyond that.
Sure, well, the amendment speaks of taking money from this post-employment benefits liability trust fund, so that's what we're asking questions about.
The OPEB is not even mentioned in the amendment. Do you want me to read the amendment?
It's okay.
The amendment, "I move to transfer from free cash the sum of $500,000 for the purposes listed in Article Nine, such sum to be added to that previously appropriated under Article Ten of the April 30, 2012 Spring Annual Town Meeting." OPEB is not implicitly, explicitly mentioned.
I believe, I thought we were talking about leaving less money behind for Article Three by taking the money, that's why the question, did that make sense to you, Paul?
Right, the question becomes, we've only got $894,000 in free cash. We passed over Article Three to get it to this article, and obviously, it was not to fund Article Three, which was the OPEB, so that we could take the $500,000 and fund it to this article. I believe they're related, yes.
Right, which is why I asked the question. My only concern is that if we get too far ahead of the curve, when the state gets to crisis mode, then we will already have paid in and we won't get the benefit, whatever benefit the state comes up with. That's my only concern, if we pay too much upfront, we're ahead of the other towns.
But that's not how it works. Basically, just like the pension situation, every city and town is rated individually. When we calculate our OPEB liability, it's not some part of a greater pool, it's for those actual employees and retirees that are owned by the town of Chelmsford, just like our pension obligation is just for those who retired from the town of Chelmsford. So if we aggressively fund it, don't aggressively fund it, our liability remains, so it's not going to be part of a state pool.
Are there any details from the state as far as whatever they had in mind?
They have no funding mechanism.
They have no ideas.
They have no funding mechanism and no funding requirement, which shows you, I mean, this, people are shutting down, are talking about shutting down the government in Washington about living beyond your means, and instead, the state and some cities and towns are turning a blind eye to a real obligation, which is verified and can be done by an actuarial study.
Thank you.
Brian Latina, Precinct Four. Mr. Moderator, the funding for the entire fire station, $7.8 million, is essentially being funded out of our free cash. We came to this body a year ago and we said, we're not going to take out a 20-year bond, but rather, we're going to take money each year, instead of taking out the bond, to money that is in our operating budget, money that would have been paid to the firemen and the policemen and the teachers in terms of raises or covering some of their retirement funding or perhaps building a new school with the extra free cash we had available. Free cash, Mr. Moderator, is money that was received to the town in excess of our budget, in excess of what town meeting voted for at the beginning of this year. And right now, we've got about $1 million, more or less, in free cash available, and this time, for the first time, I'm going to say, in the last three years, we put a little bit of money in there, quarter million dollars at one point. Last year, we put a little bit more, almost a million dollars. For the first couple of years, we just started putting money towards retirement. We really ought to look at taking this half million dollars that the taxpayers overpaid this year and pay what we didn't expect on this building. $500,000 was unexpected, we want to finish the fire station, and instead of going back to the voters and taking another $500,000, the previous speaker who amended this motion says, let's take the money that was overpaid this year and use that instead of adding another half million dollars to the backs of our taxpayers. And with regarding our retirement fund, the OPEB, we just reduced that from $170 million, double our budget for a year, to $86.7 million. I think that was a pretty good reduction in our overall cost, future cost, unfunded liability. So let's take this half million dollars from what our taxpayers overpaid this year and fix this problem that we didn't expect, and don't go back to them and ask for another half million dollars. With all due respect, I think the town manager did a fantastic job taking $82 million out of our unfunded liability. Let's take a half million dollars out of current year money and spend it on a current year problem.
Just to be clear, you're speaking in favor of the amendment?
Yes, I'm speaking in favor of the amendment to use taxpayer money from this year to fix a problem in our old building next door to the new fire station this year.
Thank you. Next.
Glenn Thorne, Precinct Five. The one thing I think I can give credit to both Pat Maloney and the town manager is they are able to integrate the long view of the finances of the town. And having the entire finance committee support this motion and most of the Board of Selectmen, I understand what Jim is trying to do, Selectman Lane's trying to do, but when we look at things like the stabilization fund, if you grab the charts on your stabilization fund from your book, you'll see our stabilization fund was dropping, so this town was going to be broke, and the town would have to go into the red for anything that it did because they couldn't attach any additional funds. And then Paul Cohen became the town manager and we had some other things take place that allowed us to budget more effectively, put the right perspective on where our expenses were over time, and build the stabilization fund back up, so our bond rating improved. So when I look at the overall management of the finance of this town and when Paul and Pat say, look, I need this much money, I've got a contingency built in, I'm adding $45,000 over the long term, I believe individually, and I think by their past history of how they've handled the funds of this town, that that's the right decision to make. You don't just take a giant chunk of money, I see a problem, I'm going to throw a chunk of money at it and solve that problem. You have to think about the long-term repercussions, because the minute you throw that $500,000 on this one problem, you're taking it away from the long-term solution of another problem, the pension expenses. So for me, the argument that Paul has made in the context of what Pat has told us is the right way to go about this. I'm going to vote in favor of, in favor of the additional funds for the fire station, I'm going to vote against the amendment and dropping $500,000 on this one problem, because we must take the long-term view, and that's what you've heard over and over again, stabilization fund, what we bond, what we don't bond, getting after our pension liabilities, the long-term point of view is what will keep this town as sound financially as it can be and not just throwing money after each problem that you see. You know, when we have bids that come in high... You know, when we have bids that come in high because we have no control over that bidding process, yes, we have to deal with that wisely, but again, that's going to be bonded over the long term. So, I would vote against this amendment and for the original amendment, the original motion.
Next side. Peggy? That side's up.
I'm sorry. Okay, Mr. Moderator, I want to speak for the amendment because I think this is spare cash that came in. If we spend it now, we're not putting it on the credit card for the future and not paying interest on it for 20 years. Thank you.
Richard Grove, Precinct 3. I'd like to speak against the amendment. I think the town manager, the Board of Selectmen, and the Finance Committee have presented us with a responsible plan for accomplishing the things we need to do, completing a sound fire station and not kicking the can down the road on pension benefits. It's all too easy for us to say, "Well, let's only spend a half million this year," but I think the plan that we put forward is the right one. We should be putting in the million dollars each year. I find it incredible that those who are speaking for lower taxes and responsible spending want to kick the can down the road. Thank you.
Hi, Beth Logan, Precinct 3. I want to make it clear to people who seem to think this is free cash. This is not a question of having cash in your pocket or putting more money on debt. This is, are you going to pay the Visa or are you going to pay the MasterCard?
What question are we in debate?
We're in debate.
We have to rehearse our decisions.
I don't understand your concern. Say it again. Come up to the mic, please.
She just wants to know when we'll hear recommendations from the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen.
Right after the lines go away.
On the amendment?
Yes.
I will wait. I mean, in the past, they haven't made recommendations on amendments, but I'll speak in opposition if you, if you want, Mr. Moderator. I've been involved in the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen over the past almost 12 years. When I first joined the Finance Committee, our finances were in a shambles, okay? We had no stabilization fund. We were balancing the budget through smoke and mirrors, and since Mr. Cohen has been the town manager, I've seen a complete turnaround. When you have a town manager who's talented enough to improve your bond rating in your town twice during a recession, when everybody else is falling apart, you have to have some value in the opinions that he makes, okay? I heard someone say, "Well, we're going to be paying interest on the debt service." Well, that's true. If we borrow the half a million dollars, we're going to be paying interest on that. On the other hand, you also heard Mr. Souza point out that we got 8% interest on the money that we invested in the, in the OPEB. So, you know, to me, we have to look forward to our children and our grandchildren and say, "Are we going to saddle them with a huge bill that they're not going to be able to deal with? We're paying $4 million a year on our retirement because our predecessors didn't plan properly." We're trying to be responsible and plan properly, and I'm hoping that you vote down this amendment. I hope that you vote in favor of the original plan. One of the things that I don't think anybody's pointed out is that we are saving $485,000 in a reduction in debt service because of the South Row School, I believe, or the Center School, I forget. But it just seems to me as though if we don't continue to fund our OPEB liability, it's going to have a negative impact on our bond rating in the future. And if I'm going to trust somebody in this room with finances, it's going to be Paul Cohen.
Thank you. Since this amendment involves money, I will get recommendations from the Finance Committee? No recommendation?
I said something to add.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to add that when Groton went to go for their bond rating, what kept them from going from a AA+ to a AAA bond rating was the fact that they didn't fund their OPEB liability. So, when they went out to bond their fire station, their interest rate, which could have been a lot better, wasn't because they didn't fund that liability.
Any recommendations from the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen can't make a recommendation. We're not actively in a meeting right now. We don't have time to converse during the meeting to make recommendations on amendments, so it's all up to town meeting.
Okay, we're voting on the amendment. And again, the amendment is to transfer from free cash the sum of a half million dollars for the purposes listed in Article 9. Such sum to be added to that previously appropriated under Article 10 of the April 30, 2012 Spring Town Meeting. If you vote in the affirmative, you're voting for the amendment. If you vote against it, you're voting against the amendment to keep the original article intact. Go.
This is Kelly Beatty for Chelmsford Telemedia. You're seeing some cracks in the stalwart front of approval for some of these projects. The town is in a position now where it can afford to either take some of the free cash and put it toward future retirement benefits or defray the cost of this half-million-dollar overrun on the cost of the fire station. You're seeing here on the screen that most people are not in favor of Selectman Lane's amendment. The fact that he offered it suggests that there is division within the board.
The vote is 21, yes. 123, no. Two abstentions. The amendment fails.
So, we'll go back to the original motion.
However, you're not out of the woods yet. I have another amendment.
Which would appropriate a half million dollars toward the fire station for additional funding.
From Claire Jeanard, Precinct 7. It wants to change $500,000 to $400,000.
Claire Jeanard, Precinct 7. The purpose of my amendment to reduce the amount of the increase for the fire station is not to penalize the program or the project in any way, but I do hear in the presentation that there is a certain amount of contingency. I'm not looking for second-rate value engineering to get to $250,000. But to put it in perspective on how I'm feeling about this, we spend a lot of money in this room all the time. $18 million for the energy project last year. We believe that they are the right things to do when we do it, but it's always the first dollar that's asked for, the top dollar that's asked for. And in this particular project, I really think we should show the taxpayers that we care about their dollars, and I'm hearing from the proponent in the Permanent Building Committee that he can do it for less if he needs to and that it'll still be a quality project. So, that's the reason for my $100,000 number. Initially, it was based on the assumption that we saved $80,000 on the first-phase contract, and then we had rounded up the amount we needed by $16,000, so that added to the $100,000 number that I was going to plan to come forward with. As I understand it, that $80,000 that we saved already got spent on something else. I don't understand that. I would think that there should be a chance that something might come back to the town if we're able to finish a project below budget, but it never seems to work that way. So, I'd like to have them come back to the town in April if they need, really, really need this money and tell us what they need it for.
For the record, I need a second for that amendment.
Peggy Dunn, Precinct 1. I'll second the amendment.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Discussion.
You know, I would really like to come up here and say that I know how to run a project better than Pat Maloney, and I know how to handle finance better than Paul Cohen, but I don't, you know? So, if I wanted to find a few dollars to save and, you know, say that, you know, "Let's cut this 5%, let's cut $100,000 out of here," you'd look at me and say, "Well, where'd that come from?" And I was hoping to hear a good reason why there was a $400,000 versus a $500,000 recommendation here, and I listened very carefully. I didn't hear one, you know? So, it's just that, you know, "Hey, we can cut a few, we can cut $100,000 and make the taxpayers feel good that we've driven the project down and taken away some flexibility and a contingency from people that know what they're doing." I'm not going to do that. So, I would recommend that you provide the entire amount, and if there is additional money available to come back, we'll get it. Now, the other thing that was said was, you know, "Hey, there's never any money that comes back to the town from these projects." But if you've been paying any attention to what's going on in Massachusetts, everybody's projects are overrunning, and they're going back for more money and more money and more money to the towns, towns around us all the time. You haven't heard that here except for this one time where the budget was broken by the bids. So, if I hear that kind of argument come to us that they need additional money, that's an honest request from us. We've got the North Town Hall, the Center Town Hall, we've got the auditorium at the schools, we've got other projects that come in on budget, literally saving us the millions and millions of dollars that other towns have to suffer because they can't run a project like the projects have been run in Chelmsford. I say that that $100,000 savings is a false savings. If Pat needs to have $200,000 contingency, I think he deserves to have it. If he doesn't spend it, I know where it's coming back.
Mr. Moderator? Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
I'd like the chance to just speak to the amendment, please. You know, we could, we could take the risk and go out and try to go work this project with $100,000 in contingency. In all likelihood, what would probably happen is we'd hit that, a couple of change orders that we'd have to do prior to town meeting or what have you, and we'd be back and we'd be looking for money, and it could potentially stop the project. I am uncomfortable going in to try to complete this project for you folks with a short contingency amount. I've stated that I think $200,000 is very safe, but, you know, we could stop the project dead in its tracks if we don't have enough money by the time that we initiate a special town meeting or whatever the circumstances may arise. It really puts us at odds and it builds in risk for us. So, I'll be the first, and you've heard me say it, I, you know, if there's money left over, I'll come back and ask what you want to do with it. We have a track record. I'm very confident for 200. I'm not confident for 100, and if we have to stop the project, the bill gets bigger every single day because of extended general conditions for the general contractor, keeping people on site, keeping equipment on site. It's a very risky venture to go in with too little contingency.
Will Wagner, Precinct 8. Just a question on the numbers. So, the initial estimate had a $300,000 contingency.
That's correct.
And you're asking for $500,000 more dollars, which will leave us with a $200,000 contingency.
That's correct.
Which means we, the estimates have overrun the initial plan by 600,000. Is that correct?
You could look at it that way.
Okay, that's, I mean, I don't know how else to look at it, but that seems to be a rather large overrun, and it says almost 10% of the initial requested money.
Yep.
So, with that in mind, $200,000 left over for contingency, is that really going to be enough? Are you not going to come back in the spring and say, "We need another 400,000 to cover the $200,000 contingency plus some additional overruns"?
I've said it several times this evening. I would not anticipate coming back. I'm comfortable with $200,000 for a contingency amount. You know, when you, you know, we've done, under my watch, we've done over $50 million worth of, worth of projects, and this is the first time I've come back. So, but I also have to look at all the other, you know, Drakken Town Hall over budget, Harvard Town Hall over budget, Marshfield Fire Station just a couple of weeks ago over budget. All of these projects are coming in. Your home values went up probably 8% this year. Your stocks, your IRAs have all gone up. It's all in parallel. I mean, this is what we've seen. We could not have projected a year ago, or April of 2012, that we would see such a jump in less than one year. So, yes, we're up 600, you know, if you want to look at it, 600,000. What I'm, what I'm asking for here is to give these guys what's necessary to complete the station that, that they need to be able to operate and for the town to have a sense of stability, knowing that we're not going to come back after we have to go cheap it out and put in lesser HVAC systems and, you know, lesser protection systems and so on. So, you know, you tell me that you want to take the 200 away, we're still going to go get it done, one way or another, but we're going to start cutting. And at some point, you're going to pay for it. So, you know, I, again, I'm uncomfortable with, you know, 100 or 200 or whatever.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just a little concerned because, you know, our initial estimate came in and it was $300,000 left over for contingency, which we've now used up and are looking for more. So, it just seems that there's a continual overrun here, and no, nothing against you guys. I'm sure you're doing the best job.
It's not a continual overrun. Why would you say it's a continual overrun?
Okay, it's, it's one overrun so far, and we're still not into construction. Well, we've just started construction.
We've got our bids.
So, with the, with the $200,000 that you are looking for to finish our construction for next September, I mean, the, we got the bids for the elevator, it came in double the initial bid. We're going to find something which is going to, like you say, the renovating the town hall to add in the training room and the offices. We tear it out and there's stuff in the walls, which is going to require more stuff.
That's why you carry contingency.
Carol Kowalski, Precinct 5.
Are you for or against the amendment?
I am. Basically, I'm for the original proposal. And I'm against the amendment. I just want to remind the entire body that when we started a school project in the 1990s, Pat was on board then and brought the projects in under budget and brought us back millions and millions of dollars from the state, from those boards. And so, I do have a great deal of faith in what his committee is doing and how hard they work for the town, and that if they can bring it under budget, they will. Thank you.
Ms. Moderator, Bill Griffin, Precinct 9. A little confused. Are we in question and answer or debate on the amendment?
Debate. There's no question and answer. But you can ask questions during debate.
Very good. Like to ask a question and then state my position. Pat, just for a point of reference, back in the police station project at the time, size of the project roughly similar?
Square footage was, yeah.
No, I'm sorry. I meant in terms of monetary amount.
My, well, I, I don't want to speak intelligently about all that went on for the police station, but I know that it started with a $5 million budget and it ended up being 7.2, and I believe they went back to the well twice.
Okay, and, and in terms of record of contingency fund and some of the other projects, we're usually around this amount or higher, correct, and 5%?
Typically, what we've done in the past is carry 5% contingency for new construction and 10% for renovation. But again, we've had, as was asked earlier, about, you know, asbestos and hazardous materials, surveys and things like that. We recently have that. I think we have a cost of $10,000 or $15,000 to take care of the few little things that they found, and other than that, we don't expect any real problems because we're not taking down a lot of walls and, and such. We're just putting new infrastructure and IT infrastructure and the training room and things like that in there. So, we don't expect even to have a lot of problems on the renovations, quite honestly. But you don't know what you're going to hit as you're getting up out of the ground when you go to tie into the building if there's some condition that we just couldn't have anticipated. So, I, you know, one could argue that the $200,000 is light for contingency, but based on my knowledge of the project, I stand before you and say that the Permanent Building Committee and Pat Maloney are comfortable with $200,000 for contingency.
Folks, that being said, I'm opposed to this amendment to reduce this contingency amount. When you look at the project overall, this has been a long, long gestating project. It's something we've needed for a long time. Pat and the team have done an outstanding job. Basically, we've asked them to stand on their head and spit Len Nichols and put this thing on a hill as opposed to some of the other areas in town where the engineering requirements would have been a lot less. The departments may do for a long time with a lot of different things. The departments may do for a long time with a lot of different things. In particular, you have a combination ladder truck pump that had to make a lot of accommodations to fit into the smaller building and we continue to pay that price all the time in terms of that truck's availability and ongoing maintenance and our reliance on other towns for coverage for the services of that truck when it's out of service. That's a case of penny wise, pound foolish, and I think you're heading down this path. You put these people into a corner where they're building an outstanding engineering project on probably less than the optimal footprint and I believe have done a great job in trying to meet that, meet our current demand going forward. Please don't strip the project down so that 10 years from now, he's coming back for another fix. Thank you.
Thank you.
Won't be meet 10 years from now, Bill.
We'll put it to a vote since Finance and Selectmen have not had a chance to meet separately. If you vote yes, you're in favor of reducing the amount from 500 to 400. If you vote no, you're in favor of keeping the original article as is. 500. The amendment fails. We are now back to the original article and we're in a debate section. Is there any debate on the original article? Okay, let's go to the vote. It's the original motion. Town manager Paul Cohen moves that 500,000 be appointed to fund the design and construction of a new center fire station headquarters, et cetera. So if you're in favor of the 500,000, please vote yes. The vote is 122 yes, 19 no, five abstentions. The motion passes.
Thank you.
And now we go back to Article 3. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We've sort of covered this, so I'm not going to be repetitive, but basically, we're seeking the appropriation here under Article 3 of $894,206 to the OPEB Liability Trust Fund. Again, to cover the cost for the 774 retirees and 578 active employees who meet the requirements under the post-employment benefit health insurance entitlement. The town contributes 60% of the premiums. Again, our liability is $85.4 million and again, we're required to report this as part of our annual financial statements. Again, we're not where we'd want to be in terms of doing the full $2.3 million, but at least at the million dollar level, we can considerably and honestly say we're making considerable progress. Thank you.
Any questions? Seeing none. Recommendation from Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends approval unanimously.
Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen recommends approval with four in favor and one opposed.
Any debate? Seeing none. All those in favor, Article 3, Town Manager Paul Cohen moves that the town transfer from free cash to sum of $894,206 to the other Post-Employment Benefits Liability Trust Fund. All in favor, vote yes. The vote is 136 yes, six no, zero abstentions. The motion passes. We're now on Article 10. Thomas A. St. Germain Senior moves that the town transfer the sum of $50,000 from the sale of graves and lots to the Cemetery Improvement and Development Fund.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. What the Cemetery Commission is seeking under this article is an appropriation of $50,000, which comes from the sale of graves and lots, to continue their improvements to the Fairview Cemetery. Basically, if you've been by that area, a lot of improvements have already taken place. The final stage of the project is for them to mark out the new areas for lot sales and also they want to install a niche wall so that those who wish to be buried in North Chelmsford can have a cremation option. So the Cemetery Commission and I would ask you your support for this article.
Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval.
Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen unanimously recommends approval.
Any debate? Seeing none. Article 10. Vote yes if you're in favor.
Perhaps George doesn't believe in cremation.
Vote is 136 yes, one no, zero abstentions. The motion passes. Article 11. Standing motion for Matt Hansen to waive the reading.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is basically a housekeeping article. We're basically turning back unexpended monies from community preservation projects in the amount shown. $72 from the sound theatrical lighting at the Center for the Arts, $15,000, the Oak Hill planning study didn't use any of the money that was provided, so they're returning it back to the Community Preservation Fund. $2,690 balance left over for the Middlesex Canal Toll House Project and $109 for the installation of theatrical lighting and a sound system at the town hall. So Community Preservation and I request your support to free up these monies to go back into the Community Preservation Fund.
Any questions? Seeing none. Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval.
Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen unanimously recommends approval.
No debates. All those in favor of the motion for Article 11, vote yes. All those against, vote no. Motion is unanimous, 137 yes. Article 12.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Again, this is another housekeeping or basically follow-up item from the spring annual town meeting, much like the Finance Director John Souza presented earlier in terms of the debt service and articles that we borrowed from the previous meeting. Similarly, when he went out to the market, he also bonded the cost for the Sheen Farm purchase and for the Community Preservation Committee's portion of the synthetic recreational fields project. Therefore, in order to tidy up the amounts, now that we have a known interest rate for the borrowing that took place in the summer, the, we need to appropriate an additional $19,987 from the Community Preservation Fund Reserve to fund the Community Preservation Fund debt service for this current fiscal year.
Questions? Recommendation, Finance Committee?
Finance Committee unanimously recommends approval.
Recommendation, Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen unanimously recommends approval.
Debate? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 12, vote yes. Again, the vote, 142 yes, and it's unanimous. I have a motion before me by Karen DeDonato to move Articles 17 and 18 before Article 13. This is a debatable motion. Karen?
Karen DeDonato, Precinct 8. I made this motion to allow the body to take up those two amendments while our citizens who have come here to hear those two articles are here. I find the zoning bylaw articles to be very cumbersome and rather than drag them out and make everybody stay for them, I thought it would be better to approach those two articles first.
Someone want to second it?
This is, we're in a debate section now. This is debatable article.
Who seconds?
Could you come up, give your name?
I can only speak to Article 17 since it's mine and I'm going to be here anyways, so I would just as soon, you know, not bump everybody else and, you know. So Article 18, I'll let them speak for themselves, but as far as 17 goes, I'm going to be here anyway, so it doesn't matter.
Nick DeSilvio, Precinct 5, I'll second that.
Mr. Kirland, is that you're for or against?
I'll amend my motion to just Article 18, that we take that up now.
Motion has been amended to just move Article 18 before Article 13. Do I have a second for that?
Nick DeSilvio, Precinct 5, I'll second that.
Okay, this is debatable.
Beth Logan, Precinct 3. I'm a little worried about the people who know that we're a little slow here, not meant but, and wouldn't show up today for Article 18 because we tend not to get through 17 articles in a night. So there might be people at home planning on coming on Thursday.
Fran McDougall, Precinct 1. I also know some people who did not expect this to come up this evening and expected, and I think we're setting a precedent by jumping the zoning. I was set to work on zoning tonight, so I would prefer we stick to the book.
Moving articles is a regular course of business. Let me remind the residents that you can participate in a debate. So if the residents want to debate, you're allowed to participate, you just can't vote.
Maria Carafellis, Precinct 2. I vote that we leave everything alone and not move anything around.
Tom Cristiano, Precinct 9. I recommend that we allow this Article 18 to come up now because I could obviously see that there are many people here, residents who aren't town meeting representatives specifically for this Article 18. So I highly recommend that we vote yes on this motion to move Article 18 up.
Karen DeDonato, Precinct 8. I was just wondering if I could get a show of hands from the back of how many people are here for that article? Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, Bill Griffin, Precinct 9. I'm in favor of moving this article up while a grinder pump and sewage disposal is not nearly as sexy as a football field. We set precedent when we moved them up last time.
Colleen Stansfield, Precinct 6. And I'm in favor of moving Article 18 till tonight. Once we get into these zoning articles, it is going to be a lot long presentation and there are going to be many questions and these people, we will not get to them tonight. So I'm in favor of moving Article 18 to tonight.
Any more debate?
I don't know which microphone I'm supposed to be at.
Are you for or against it?
I'm sorry?
You for moving the article up or against it?
I'm against it.
You're against moving the article up ahead of 13?
Is this better now? Nobody has a guarantee to the way the articles come up. They are the way they are and I would like to not move any around and just let's take them as they are.
Dave Hadley, Precinct 3. I'm for moving the article to tonight, 18.
Kathy Teberty, Precinct 1. A point of order, Ken, I was asked by the back of the room if any of them can come up and talk.
They're allowed to come up and debate. They just can't vote. But remember, you're just debating the, moving the article up. You're not debating the merits of Article 18, just moving it up.
Point of order, Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
This is not an article. This is an amendment.
I'm sorry.
This is an amendment to the order in which we're taking the articles.
Yes, and if you look at the.
That's not a debatable object for.
Certainly is.
For the citizens, that's a debatable object for us. We're just taking this out of turn. This is a motion to take out of turn.
The only thing the charter says that residents cannot do specifically is they cannot vote. They're allowed to participate in the proceedings and this is the proceeding. They can't vote.
But it's not an article proceeding, sir.
Residents may participate in proceedings and moving an article up.
Moving an article up is a privileged motion, sir.
Taking out of order is debatable and it's a privileged motion. We've got to deal with this before we deal with any other article.
Right, sir, which citizens, citizens being allowed to debate would be part of any article, not part of parliamentary order.
No. They can, they can debate whether we should move it up or not, but they can't vote on it. But you have to limit your comments to moving the article up, not the merits of the article. Go ahead.
My name is Richard Gorham and I live on 15 Fenwick Drive. I'm a 41-year resident of Chelmsford and I have been waiting 14 years for this amendment to be held tonight.
Mr. Moderator, Ann McWhiggin, Precinct 1. It is 9:30 currently. If this article is brought forward out of order, the argument will ensue well beyond the 11 o'clock deadline and everyone in this room knows that. All you have to do is look at the number of people in the back wishing to address it. Personally, I'm in favor of the article. Personally, I'm in favor of the article. I am not in favor of moving it up.
Next.
Sam Polton, precinct eight. I'd like to move the question.
Okay, the question's been moved on moving the Article 18 ahead of Article 13. Simple majority. All those in favor of moving Article 18 ahead of 13, vote yes. All those. Sorry, move the question. Move the question is a two-thirds vote. I got ahead of myself. All those in favor of moving the question, vote yes. Okay, the votes, 125 yes, 12 no. The motion to move the question stands. All those in favor of moving Article 18 to Article 13 before Article 13, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. Okay, the vote's in. It's 89 yes, 52 no. Article 18 is coming up.
I don't know what the, I mean, if this is going to take a while, nobody's gotten up to stretch their legs out, so.
Five-minute break. Exactly five minutes.